Regular Board of Education meeting 1568 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy?
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And at this time, we will stand for a pledge and I would like to invite Evie and Brody, our students from Sappington Elementary School, to come up here in the front to lead us.
And you guys can either face the flag if you want, or you can face the crowd. Whatever you want to do, however you want to start.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as I mentioned, we are recognizing Sappington Elementary School this evening, and I will turn it over to Dr. Parker, Principal of Sappington Elementary, to present these recognitions.
I am so excited to recognize some amazing students and amazing staff members of Sappington. I am first going to start with our fourth grade student, Evie. Can you come up, Evie? You're gonna face all those family members with the cameras as they're videotaping you? Yeah. So, some things about Evie and why we are recognizing her tonight. Evie is always willing to try something new, even when it challenges her. She always has a can-do attitude. She's a cheerleader for others. She reminds peers that it's okay if they don't succeed on the first try. She encourages others. She's very fun to be around. She includes others in everything. She's a student leader. She also helps our younger students transition from recess to lunch every single day. Lu- Lucy. Evie, Evie is an incredible example of a Sappington and Lindbergh flyer. Congratulations, Evie.
So, Evie, we have for you a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month, so there's that for you. Congratulations. And then we have a t-shirt for you as well. You can't have enough Lindbergh gear, right? Right? So, there you go. We're gonna get us, hold on to that, and if you want to hold on to that and face this nice lady with the camera right here, we're pretty good in front of the ar- oh, you want us to come over? All right, we're gonna stand over here because Beth wants the arch in there, and you got that, all right.
Next, I would like to recognize our fifth grade student, Brody. Brody, can you come on up? So, Brody deserves this recognition because he consistently shows our Sappington four pillars of character. Respect. He is always respectful and kind to his classmates, staff, and members of our Sappington community. Responsibility. He takes care of all of his materials and he helps maintain a clean classroom environment. Do you keep your bedroom clean? Oh, good job. Self-control. He always does the right thing, even when no one is looking. He's very independent. And integrity. He consistently does what is expected of him. He's reliable, helpful, and courteous. Congratulations, Brody, on this recognition.
All right, Brody, we have a certificate for you, also recognizing you as Student of the Month, so there's that for you, and a t-shirt as well, so congratulations. There you go, buddy. Let's get a picture in front of the arcs there. Miss Johnson. There we go. You got it? All right, good.
Now, I am pleased to announce our Support Staff Person of the Year, Mrs. Sarah Johnson. Can you come up, please? Sarah is an amazing library assistant. She goes above and beyond to help our students and teachers. Even during our book fair, when the library is not available for checkout, she came up with a plan to continue getting books in the hands of our students. Hence, the library on the cart, where she visited classrooms to make their book exchange. She always has a friendly smile. She's hardworking and dependable. We love her creativity with her cheerful bulletin boards. She's patient, resolves problems, and finds resources with grace. She supports Sappington to make it a better place for all. Congratulations, Sarah.
Sarah, we have a certificate for you, recognizing you as Support Staff Person of the Year at Sappington Elementary, so there's that for you. And then we have a $25 gift certificate to our online spiritware store, so you get to pick out the next hoodie or something like that. On the size large, if you want it. All right, there we go. There you go. There you go.
And our 2022 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Amy Jankerson, our kindergarten teacher. Come on up. Did you say you had a speech to?
No. I'm testing you, or what?
Amy Jankerson always has a great attitude. She's always looking on the bright side, and she celebrates small victories for all students. She's unstoppable. She goes above and beyond for our students to experience success. She works closely with families. She's a true problem solver and an advocate for our students. She's a lifelong learner. She embraces new ideas in order to do what's best for all learners. She constantly strives to grow as a teacher. Amy is a teacher leader with a big heart. All things you would want your child to experience their first year in elementary, Amy Jankerson possesses. Congratulations, Amy.
Amy, we have a certificate for you as well, recognizing you as Sappington's Teacher of the Year, so congratulations with that, and also a $25 gift certificate to the online store. Congratulations. You bet.
And at this time, we usually take a short break so that everyone here for the recognition portion of our meeting are free to leave. If you want to stay for the business part, you're welcome, but...
Yeah, you probably, yeah, it's not real exciting at times, so you got homework to do, other things to do, right? There you go. Yes.
We have two this evening. National School Social Work Week and Apple Master Lease Purchase Agreement Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the consent resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Julia, second by Matt. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. 6.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Agenda Items. We have none this evening, so we will move to 7.0 Communications. 7.01 Calendar of Events, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you for being a short month. We're pretty busy at the district. Starting tomorrow, February 16th, the Truman versus Sperring basketball game is in the gold gym at the high school, so if anyone's interested in what? We won't take sides, but girls are at 3:45 and boys are at 4:45. Reminder that there is no school this Friday, February 17th, as well as Monday, February 20th. On February 21st, the Board will hold a special meeting to hold CMAR interviews, and then Student Life Board Advisory meets February 23rd. Lindbergh High School winter musical Disney's Beauty and the Beast will be running from February 23rd through the 25th, so get your tickets and support those students. February 27th through March 3rd is National Public Schools Week. Teaching and Learning Board Advisory will, has been rescheduled for February 28th. The high school CAP students are hosting Equity Night in the Lindbergh High School Auditorium, March 1st at 6:00 PM. On March 7th, we have our next Parent Speaker Series. Our Facility Board Advisory meets March 8th, and Finance Board Advisory meets March 9th. And then there is a Board of Education Candidate Forum on Monday, March 13th. Then we're back here on Wednesday, March 15th, for our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Thank you. Sappington is having a great time.
They're having a lot of fun out there.
We will move to 7.02 Report of Meetings. Does anyone have any state or parent group meetings to report on for this past month? I know I just have a hard time remembering.
I would just like to share that today I had the privilege of being a judge at the FBLA District Competition, and so that was my first time. It was really, really cool. I see our students out there. They've had a long day, so we'll have to move through, but it was really neat. I judged graphic design, which I thought I might be more business, and so the students had to present the creation of branding for a nonprofit. And so, it was, it was wonderful to coach them and talk to them and interact with them, so it was fun. It was fun.
Anyone else? All right. We will move to 7.03 Announcements.
We have one, the Board of Education Candidate Forum, and that will be held on Monday, March 13th at 6:30 PM. Here, candidates will have an opportunity to share their views, and the community will have an opportunity to submit questions. This will be held both in person and available on the district's YouTube channel. For more information, you can visit our website.
Thank you. And then upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas.
Yes. So, again, we will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February 21st, to hold CMAR interviews, and then we're scheduled on Tuesday, March 14th, for a regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. Some agenda items include our PEG students will be present to speak to the board, the 2022-23 Listening and Learning Report, for the record reports on school climate and curriculum revisions, and lastly, our students from Concord Elementary, along with our Gifted Education Program are scheduled to be present for recognitions.
Thank you. 7.05 Board of Education Member Appointments. There are none this evening, so we'll move to 7.06 MSBA Board Report. Helen?
Welcome to the February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the Governor's State of the State Address last month. On January 18th, Governor Parson delivered his annual State of the State Address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Education was once again a focus.
Now, as a product of public education, the father of a schoolteacher, the grandfather of a first-year schoolteacher and preschooler, I know the American dream could not be possible for so many without a quality education. This year, we will again fully fund the Foundation Formula with an additional $117 million to ensure Missouri schools are receiving the support they need.
During his speech, Governor Parson detailed the progress his administration has made in education funding, teacher pay, and workforce development. The governor's budget proposal also includes $233 million for school transportation needs, $32 million to expand the career ladder program, and continues the teacher baseline salary program that raised teacher pay from $25,000 to $38,000 per year. Additionally, the governor proposed $50 million for school safety grants for Missouri schools to make physical security investments on their campuses, develop security plans, establish school resource officer programs, and increase active threat trainings. Governor Parson also requested $56 million to expand pre-kindergarten options.
There is a clear need to do better when it comes to early childhood. Let's meet this moment for Missouri families, Missouri kids, and our businesses.
There are many issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of interest to MSBA and school board members throughout the state. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts, periodic webinars, and MSBA's Action Center website. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. MSBA Director of Governmental Relations, Brandt Shields, says that in addition to advocating for your district, it's also important to serve as an educator to legislators.
There's not really a space for subject matter experts in our legislature. They have to be a foot deep and a mile wide across a whole bunch of, bunch of issues. So, be that subject matter expert for them when it comes to public education, and be that trusted source, so when they have questions, they know that they can come to you as a locally-elected school board member.
On that note, don't miss your chance to visit your legislator at the Capitol during MSBA's Advocacy Day. Known formerly as Legislative Forum, Advocacy Day is scheduled for March 28th in Jefferson City. The event will be preceded by a spring virtual meeting on March 1st and weekly lunch and learn sessions on Fridays to provide legislative updates on the issues that matter to you. Check the MSBA website for registration information for all of these events. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March, as proclaimed by Governor Parson. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. And finally, on January 31st, parents, school board members, school leaders, and supporters from St. Louis Public Schools, Normandy Schools Collaborative, and Kansas City Public Schools visited the Capitol for the Parents' Day of Action. The group was recognized by both the House and Senate, and then set out to visit with legislators before ending the day with a rally for supporters in the Capitol rotunda. Matt Davis, President of the City of St. Louis Board of Education, explained why it's important to tell the stories of local schools.
It's important to have the parents come, meet their legislators, meet legislators that they don't necessarily know, but are passing bills that affect our schools and our students, and tell their stories, and to just sort of explain from their perspective why they are so happy with their public schools and why it's important to strengthen them.
Kansas City School Board Member Jennifer Wolfsee says that although the Parents' Day of Action involved St. Louis and Kansas City parents, advocating for public schools is for everyone, regardless of district size.
I mean, really, there's more similarities between Kansas City and St. Louis and rural schools than there are differences a lot of times.
That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and for all that you do to ensure... to ensure all students succeed.
Thank you, Colin. We will move to 8.01 Cabinet Updates, and we will start with Dr. McKimmy.
Thank you. Due to some conflicting schedules, we had an online meeting this month. We discussed the personnel report, and we will continue our meetings as scheduled in March.
Thank you. And Joelle, with Finance and Facilities.
The Facilities Advisory did not meet in February. They'll meet in March, as we noted. We did meet in January and continue our conversations around our future no-tax-rate bond issue in April 2024. We also talked about summer work. It's, um, summer is the time when our facilities team has, you know, the ability to get things done in the buildings when there's no students there. So we talked about what projects we do on a reoccurring basis to keep our facilities in line. It will be a busy summer regardless because of the new high school and getting our furniture moved into the new place and things like that, so it's going to be a busy summer. Finance Committee met as normal prior to the board meeting to review the finance-related items on the board agenda. We also talked about Consumer Price Index and Assess Valuation. All those terms are very important at this time of the year as we're looking forward to March and April when we're budgeting revenue for the ensuing school year. And that's it.
Thank you. And then Dr. Sparks with your three committees.
So neither Teaching and Learning nor Student Life have met since our last meeting. Technology Board Advisory did meet, and one of our goals this year is to research the possibility of a technology skills matrix. So we've started that conversation with our Technology Board Advisory. When we talk about a technology skills matrix, we're really talking about some discrete skills we want students to master at certain points in their educational career, things that we often take for granted maybe, but we want to make sure that we're explicitly teaching them and knowing when we would expect a student to be proficient and when we're reinforcing the skills. So it could be anything from like, how do you name documents in your drive? How do you organize documents in your drive? So those things that would really help students be organized in how they use technology to enhance learning. And that's going to continue over the next couple of months as we continue to work on that process.
Thank you. And now we will move to 8.02 Student Reports with Althea, and I believe Adam here first this evening.
Thank you. So just to start us off, Ms. Vetter previously mentioned it, but this has been a pretty dense month, so bear with us through this. So to just follow up with something we previously discussed at our last student report, the Black History Month celebrations went really good. We had a Spirit Week, informational displays about influential black artists, actors, singers, and figures, a themed basketball game, and a movie night coming up sponsored by Limburg's Ro Kappa Social Studies Honor Society. Also, we had Limburg Curriculum Night recently. There were some incredible student volunteers from NHS, some of the business programs and the biomed programs, and a ton of other elective opportunities. I was there, and I can attest, it was amazing. And then some work that Althea and I are doing, we are currently in the process of forming some student focus groups to kind of really nail in on what type of things are affecting our students across grade levels. So we've been working with Dr. Sparks, Ms. Johnston, and Dr. Lake. So what we're currently thinking is an elementary-level focus, so focusing more on things like technology uses, engagement with learning, and then a secondary-level focus with topics like social media, mental health, and student-teacher engagement. And then finally, for me, I'm going to quickly go through some of our school competitions we've had at the high school. So DECA districts occurred recently. Ten students won first in their competitive divisions, with an additional 10 placing in the top five as well. Mock Trial districts recently occurred. Five teams competed in their second round of competitions, advancing Limburg to the regional competition, and actually have a quote from one of the jurors. They said, "They acted with integrity, sportsmanship, collaboration, possessed great respect for their opponents," saying that "I rarely see my opposing counsel exhibit the level of maturity and respect I saw in there tonight, let alone high school students, and I'm hopeful that one day they all pursue careers in law, so I can see their growth and advancement in professional setting." They did a great job. And then Science Olympiad Regionals happened recently. Limburg placed top five in 21 out of 23 events, placing third overall, advancing the team to state in April. And we're in a really tough division, schools like La Doo, Clayton, Marquette, some really heavy hitters. And then finally, Health Occupations Students of America, otherwise known as HOSA, which is a medical-oriented club, recently had their qualifying rounds, so we have 11 students attending the State Leadership Conference in March, and 10 of these students are attending as finalists in various medical-oriented events. And also, I forgot to include it, but our FBLA members, some of who are in the audience right now, had their district's competition today, and from what I heard from Ms. Watts and various other people, they did an amazing job, so great job, everyone.
As far as sports competitions and performances go at the high school, Flyrats recently attended the National Dance Team Championships. Varsity took home fifth place in finals, and Junior Varsity took home eighth place in finals. Also, Girls Wrestling Team had four students qualify for state. We are planning a multi-district composting initiative. A combination of students from Limburg, Kirkwood, and Oakville are developing a pro-composting initiative for students in schools, earning it distinct recognition for incorporating STEM topics as well as advocacy work in the St. Louis area. Missouri Music Educators for Association, Limburg's High School String Ensemble, attended the MME yearly convention, recently earning the honor of performing with multiple members, qualifying and playing for the All-State String Ensemble. And as well as Ms. Vetter mentioned already, CAP students at the high school are hosting their Equity Night. It is taking place March 1st, 6 to 8 p.m. Limburg speakers include the Coordinator of Gifted Programming, Dr. Tracy Bennerick-Humes, and as well as three board members of, is he that are here tonight? And the Director of Diversity, Education, and Equity and Inclusion, Dr. Sharaya Mason. And other speakers include Chloe Telly from the Missouri Equity Education Partnership, and students from SLU, Coriezu, and the Limburg Parent Equity Group lead.
Thank you, Adam and Althea. We will move to 9.0 Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent 9.01 to 9.10. Would anyone like to remove any of these items for individual consideration?
Nothing to be removed, but I'll abstain because I have personal interest in one of the items.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.10?
So moved.
Motion by Megan.
Second.
Second by Kristi. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We'll move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention, so motion passes 6-0. We have no individual action items this month, so we will move to 11.01 for the record. We have three for-the-record reports this evening: Communications Plan, Official 2022-2023 Enrollment Summary, and Request for Qualification CMAR Prop April 2024. These are for information only, and board members should contact Dr. Lake or cabinet member with any questions. We will move to our other reports, and we have two. Our first one is Enhancing Student Learning with CTSOs. Earlier this month, Missouri Governor Mike Parson issued a proclamation recognizing February 5th to 11th as Future Business Leaders of America Week. And this evening, we have students Lily Simpson and Cooper Terrell, who are co-presidents of FBLA at Limburg High School, and their sponsor, Ms. Judy Gerard, is with us tonight to present on Enhanced Student Learning.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lily Simpson, and I'm the co-president of FBLA here at Limburg, and tonight I'm joined by Jack, Alice, Micah, and Danny, some of my fellow officers, and we're here this evening to teach you about career technical education and their corresponding student organizations. Okay. So before we dive in, I just wanted to highlight a couple, like, key objectives that we're going to be going over. So first, we're going to be talking about CTSOs and how they provide engaging programs for our students, also how they connect students with the community around them, offer competition opportunities, prepare students for college and careers, and develop essential skills for their future. Okay. So what is CTE? So CTE is the acronym used for Career Technical Education. CTEs are all, sorry, all authorized under the Perkins legislation, and they provide students with academic and technical skills, knowledge and training necessary to succeed and continue to learn in the future. And then what is a CTSO? So a CTSO is a career and technical student organization. Once again, they are authorized under the Perkins legislation. CTSOs are student-led and advisor-supported professional membership organizations that promote leadership, career development, and workplace and employability skills. They are intracurricular, so they correspond with what's happening in the classroom, and then they're education and industry-aligned competitive events, scholarship, scholarships, and comprehensive learning programs.
So some of the CTSOs have a variety of metrics, or experiment leading, leadership development, and then classroom engagement. So as we see with CTSO or student organizations, we see a fraction with higher GPA, more CTE fields, and then more career path of CTEs. So we see more students with CTSOs joining and having more increase positivity with the field, with CTEs. Some of the most important points about is most CTSOs follow education in industry standards, so could be competitions in the classroom, like what we just had at your competitions today, or service leadership projects, like we sold sodas for the 14th of February to go to March of Dimes, or just workplace or professional schools, like in our chapter meetings, we have development skills. And, yeah.
Okay. So CTSO competitive event programs allow students to apply their classroom knowledge to reward scenarios in the given career path that they chose. So topics and guidelines and rating sheets are all made available in advance, allowing students to review the expectations and rapidly apply what they have learned. So there are four main different types of events students can compete in. So there are individual objective tests to assess expertise in a content area, production events assess skills learned, and team events, which can be one to three students, include objective tests and a performance event. And then finally, you have presentation events showcasing projects, speeches, or interviewing skills. Next. Okay. So conferences and events are extensions of the classroom. Student members are able to engage with their peers, and through travel to new destinations, students gain a deeper understanding of how they and their community fit into the greater global society. So these are just some pictures from our last state conference. We did extremely well, and it's a lot of fun, and we're able to network and gain some professionalism experience, along with business pitches. We practiced them, and we got to listen to some pretty interesting keynote speakers.
Um, so in FBLA, skill development is very important, a part of us. Students can gain skills for their future careers and make them more attractive to future employers. We create these skills by having them engage in community service and apply their education so students can apply it to their real-life scenarios. Our Crush Sales are a great example of this for our fundraiser for March of Dimes this February. We had all the business classes get together and sell, market, and distribute Crush sodas for Valentine's Day. And the kids can explore the careers like graphic design. They created the posters that advertised, and it was just a great real-life application of the things they were learning in class. And when they did this community service now, it further prompts them to continue on in the future. Slide. Skill development is also very important to FBLA. It makes them more marketable to employers, and we try to hone on these skills in chapter meetings, doing different types of activities, like we do elevator pitches to work on networking and communication, where basically a student has to sell themselves as if they were like trapped in an elevator with a CEO, and just tell them why they're a good employee and what they can, like, help them with. We also do, like, leadership skills through American Enterprise Day, where we had Limburg Administration, basically, and entrepreneurs just talk about their jobs, what they do, and how they got to where they were, just so kids can network with them and learn more. And after, for students who have done two credits of business, they're eligible to take a test to attain the industry-recognized credential. We also do a bunch of work and project-based learning. Right now, we have personal finance students making their own, like, financial portfolios, and it's just a great way to connect classroom learning to workplace through, like, mentorship. We also have graphic design students going over to the ECE and creating books for the kids there, just to really have that hands-on learning.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jack, and I am the president of DECA, as you can see, and I'm also the vice president of membership for FBLA, so I'd just like to recap the five CTSOs that we have at Limburg. Adam talked about a lot of them earlier with the competitions that have been going on with FBLA, DECA, and then also HOSA. So I'd like to start with HOSA. It's the biomedical one. It's talking about just the medical industry, so they're also part of Project Lead the Way, which is more engineering and technology-focused. And then we have FCCLA, which is also known as FACS, Family and Consumer Sciences. And then we have two that I'm going to talk about a little bit more in a second, which are FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, and then DECA, which is more marketing-focused. Okay. So DECA has 42 members this year. Like I mentioned, it's a marketing-focused club, so it's a little bit different than FBLA in that it's more honed in completely on marketing. And this year, we had 27 members that went to district competition, and 19 of us are going to state, including myself, so it was a pretty good turnout and pretty good success. And there's four main areas that we do for competition. They are marketing, obviously, and then entrepreneurship, hospitality, and management. So a couple of those are like, marketing management, sports and entertainment marketing, travel and tourism, and then financial services, which is what I did. And then as for community service, we do things like a food drive, the Giving Tree during the holidays, and then we also do MDA Shamrocks, which is where students will pay one or two dollars to put a Shamrock sticker on a wall with their signature on it, and we take all of the money that we get from that and we send it to MDA, which is Muscular Dystrophy Association, and then they send kids who have muscular dystrophy to summer programs, and it's really amazing. And then I'd like to talk about FBLA. This is my last slide, and FBLA, as you can notice, has 88 members, about twice as many as DECA, and this is because in order to be in DECA, you have to be in a marketing class during that school year, and so it's a little bit smaller group of people because there's not as many people to join DECA. And so anybody from ninth to 12th grade can join FBLA, so we have twice as many members and a lot of people competing in competitions. So we had 27 different people, 27 different events this year that were competed in for districts, and 21 different people made the state competition. I'd like to talk about professional development for a moment. DECA also has professional development things, but as far as FBLA goes, Alex mentioned American Enterprise Day earlier. I'd like to thank Mike Shamia for coming out to talk to people about that. It was very interesting. And then also District, State, and National Leadership Conference and competitions, that's part of professional development, being up there and doing a scenario and doing tests related to different subjects is definitely professional development. And then we have the St. Louis Federal Reserve Student Board of Directors. So there's usually one student from Limburg that sits on the student board every year, and they get to talk with students from other schools that are very interested in the Federal Reserve and economics, and they also get to talk to people from the St. Louis Federal Reserve and just learn from them and discuss different topics. And then last thing, chapter meeting, we talked about that a little bit earlier, but one of the things we're doing at the end of this year is we're doing resume building, creating resumes, and then also maybe creating LinkedIn's. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
When do you do these activities? Are these during the school day, or do you...
Are these during the school day, or do you have a club after school?
Oh, during power lunch. So during the first half of power lunch, we do them during a lunch, and there's usually about 40 to 50 people there that engage in the meetings. Any other questions?
Mr. Ard, I think that's a 100 for all of them.
That's what I was going to say. Great job, guys. And anytime we have students presenting at our board meeting, it's always a better board meeting. So great job. So thank you for having us.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
And also, I would like an invitation to the next lip sync battle, please.
I was curious, I saw a DECA dog. What is that?
Okay, so we have a bunch of different, so anybody can enter their dog in the competition. And then they have different pots where people can put money in to vote for which dog they like the most. And then we send the money to an animal shelter, and that's that.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's fantastic. My dog was.
Well, I learned a lot about CTSOs. When I saw this on the agenda, I thought, I don't know that acronym. So this is a lot of new information for me.
There you go. Thank you.
You all did amazing. Thank you.
So we'll move to Dr. Tara Sparks for school start times.
I have a request that in the future I go before the students because they are a very hard act to follow. You guys did an amazing job.
You're going to have to step up your game.
I am. And you know, high school students are going to love this conversation as well.
I was going to say, you guys probably have some opinions about this, right?
I'm apologizing now. I'm sorry. So at the board workshop in January, I shared with you the journey that we've been on. I'm going to recap that and summarize the recommendation that we have going forward for next year with regard to school start times. So Colin, if you go to the next slide. Just really want to reiterate our journey. We started this research back in the 1920 school year, the 2019, 2020 school year. Really looking at the research around adolescent development, developing priorities on what we wanted to see happen with regard to our school start times. We ended up surveying our community in the 2020, 2021 school year to determine really what the appetite for making this change would be, and then also what the timeline would be for that change. So in the 2021, 22 school year, we did change the start times. And you can see in that table at the bottom where we were in the 1920 and the 2021 school year, where school was starting at the elementary level at 8:45, middle school was starting at 7:40, and high school was starting at 7:25 in the morning. Our biggest goal was to move that high school start time back. And so currently, which we started last school year, we are at 8:55 for elementary, 7:40 for middle school, middle school did not change, and then 8 o'clock for the high school. We, last year, we did a survey with the community to garner, how is this working? Get some additional feedback. And there were some concerns that came up with the start times that we implemented last year. So we reconvened this school year after doing some further research. We reconvened the task force. I should say that the task force is comprised of teachers, students, parents, board members, administrators. So it is a comprehensive group of people who are looking at this data, doing the analysis, and making the recommendation. And ultimately, the recommendation that we're making is that we shift start times slightly so that elementary actually goes back to its 8:45 time period. You'll notice that we did extend the elementary day by 10 minutes. So this would end the school day at 3:35. And we did that in the original change back in the 21, 22 school year. That middle school would shift to the 8 to 3 p.m. time, and that high school would be 7:45 to 2:45. And I'll kind of walk through how we got to that, starting in the next slide. So the reason why we're making this change is two key elements came up in our survey last school year. One was that the instructional time at the end of the day for elementary was not having the value that we wanted. We wanted to capture as much time in the morning for our elementary learners as possible. So finding a way that we could move up that time was a priority. The other thing that came out really clearly, well, middle school students wanted to move back their day. They were very envious of high school students. But on top of that, our efficiencies at the end of the day were really problematic. So when we made the shift to high school starting after middle school, we made a very complicated transportation system. It is much more difficult for students to be picked up at the middle school at the end of the day and then get onto the high school campus. When you're talking about 39 buses having to converge on a campus all at once, very problematic. So we created the shuttle process. There were safety concerns with the shuttles because we have students getting off of the buses at the end of the day to find their shuttle while buses are still coming onto the parking lot. One of our goals with all the work that we've done with safety is to separate pedestrian traffic from bus traffic as much as possible. And we actually had created a system where we were having the two converge. So we really needed to solve that problem. So those were the two problems we needed to solve. But we wanted to really emphasize retaining that research as a core. How do we keep later times? Going back to a 7:25 start time for high school was off the table. So we needed to really think about how do we maximize their sleep needs to the best that we can, and while ensuring programming at the end of the day. There were some concerns about, you know, if we move the school day too late, students won't have access to programming, extracurricular activities. That's for elementary, middle, and high school. So that was something we needed to keep in mind as well. And when you go to the next slide, this one really kind of illustrates the impact that our initial change had. And I really want to emphasize that this impact will only likely improve with our proposed times. So what you're seeing here on the left side of the screen, and I realize it may be difficult to see, is our 1920 school year, 2019, 2020 school year. The pink show, those pink bars show what time students were starting to be picked up by buses. So you'll notice that first black line there is 6 a.m. Notice the number of students who are getting picked up by buses as early as 6 a.m. So some of those bus routes were starting at that time. The second line you can see is the 7 a.m. timeline. So that was before we changed the start times in the 21, 22 school year. On the right side, the right graphic, you'll see the impact that those bus times had. So the pink line in this case is 6 a.m. The green bars are what time students begin to get picked up. So we are much closer to a 7 a.m. pickup time. There are some outliers for some special circumstances. But for the most part, we have significantly increased the amount of time students who ride buses have in the morning and therefore have additional sleep time. Keep in mind that because our middle and our high school students ride the same buses, this impact will not change for students who are bus riders. Even though the high school would start earlier, they're still riding the same buses. So there is still an implication there for additional sleep time. We go to the next slide. This just really kind of summarizes in general what the task force process was. So what you'll see in that first column are the initial priorities. We know, we knew we needed to make transportation logistics happen. We have a lot of things we have to balance and juggle in a school system, and transportation is one of those things. We wanted to ensure that families would still have access to Flyers Club access, or to Flyers Club. And to give you an example of that, our staff for Flyers Club, they do what are called split shifts. So they come in the morning and they serve students, and then they come back at the end of the day. We didn't want to create a system where we were asking people to come for a 30-minute period of time and then come back at the end of the day for a very long period of time. We needed to make that job something that would be appealing. And so we needed to be thoughtful about how much time Flyers Club would be in the morning or the evening. Extracurricular access for students, 35% of our high school students participate in some kind of athletic event. So we wanted to make sure that what we created with the high school wouldn't cause them to actually miss class, to leave for regional opportunities. That was really important. And then finally, secondary out first. There was a desire that secondary students would be home before elementary-age students. So then in the 21, 22 survey, as I already mentioned, I won't go through all of this. These were the concerns that came up. And that's when we reconvened our task force last school year. And we said, we want to see if we can problem-solve this. So the task force said, go in and look at transportation. See if we can do something different with transportation in order to make all of these things work to the best of our ability. So a lot of work has been done on the transportation side to ease challenges. That includes how we shuttle students with our LEAP and PEGS programs. It includes how we support end-of-the-day supervision for buses as we're waiting for buses to arrive on the elementary campuses. And then we always have to look at gap times. Is there enough time for a route to finish with middle school and high school students before it goes and does the elementary route? So that was a part of that work. We did identify potential solutions. We had dream plans, and we had practical plans. And if you go to the next slide, this kind of summarizes when we looked at what's possible. If we had our dream plan, which would be that all of our schools would start sometime between 8 and 8:35, that would require that we would actually double the number of buses that we have. That's a $2.8 million expenditure. We have finite resources. So when you consider that, that is the equivalent of about 46 teachers, new teacher salaries. So something that was really not going to be feasible from the beginning. We looked at a couple of other options. We looked at a 7:50 to 8:45 window. So that's just five minutes off of what we're proposing, where middle school or high school would start one of the two. There were two different scenarios we looked at with this. But the first school start time of the day would be 7:50. That ended up equating to a $450,000 additional cost. And for five minutes, that did not seem to be something that was really a good use of resources. And then finally, we looked at a range of the school day of 7:50 is the earliest start time. But what's different on this one is that elementary would actually potentially start even earlier, at 8:35. So there was a shorter window between the secondary route and the elementary route. And doing that would be almost $1 million. So as we looked at the costs of these things and the value and the return, it just didn't, it didn't seem either feasible or a good use of resources, which is why we landed at our recommendation. So if you go to the next slide, Colin, what you'll see here is we did survey staff since the, not just staff, staff, parents, and students since our board workshop. And these are the themes. So 498 people gave input. I can tell you, I read every single comment. And so these are kind of the themes of those different comments. There was definitely appreciation for the shift for elementary and middle school. People felt that strain, for whatever reason, and appreciated that. There was very much a desire to continue to keep the 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock timeframe for the high school. And that came through clearly as well. And again, I go back to when we're looking at student transportation, that won't change for students. It's just the time of that first class. There were also some comments, and I thought this was really interesting and worth pointing out. There were some comments, not a large number, definitely, probably about a handful, maybe maximum of 10, who said, what about a wholesale shift? What if elementary was the first, the first start time of the day, and secondary was the latest? And we just reversed that. And going back again to those priorities that we had from the beginning, one of the things that's really problematic, if we don't do that as a region, is that we would be creating a system where students would be missing instructional time at the high school on a pretty regular basis. So that is a concern. If, as a region, there were something that would be viable there in the future, and we wouldn't have students missing so much class time, I think that's worth a conversation. But the way our system is set up right now, we would not be benefiting students to the degree that we would hope to be. And then finally, just a request to communicate to families what those drop-off times and changes would be as soon as the decision is made, so they can start to plan. So in conclusion, last slide, you can see the recommendation that elementary would be 8:45 to 3:35, middle school 8 to 3, and high school 7:45 to 2:45. So this is the official recommendation, and then we'll make this a part of a vote at our next meeting. Any questions?
Does this change the number of buses that we might need?
We do not anticipate that this will change the number of buses. It just makes for, it really makes a more efficient route. It is easier. One of the things that's challenging is getting all of those high school buses off the campus and then running the routes and getting to elementary. When you end the school day at the middle school, the buses are already in their regions. So that transportation turnaround can be a lot faster, and we're more likely to meet the goal of elementary buses being there on time.
I know that this doesn't have anything to do with buses, but is this schedule for ECE ever considered? I'm just thinking about parents getting to two campuses for drop-offs.
That's a conversation right now. We, as soon as this recommendation was made, we started conversations with ECE because one of the frustrations, and that showed up in the comments a little bit as well, like, thank you, can we not have ECE starting at the same time as the high school? Because having all of those families converge together is really important. So that conversation's happening right now. The other thing we have to be considerate of is at the end of the early childhood day that we also aren't ending it at the same time parents are converging to pick up kids. So we're trying to work out logistics of that right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Sparks. We have no other reports this evening, and we will move to 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items. We have one this evening. Ms. Dragon, if you want to come forward. And we have our three-minute clock. Do I need to turn this back on? It's on.
Yes. Thank you. When I first spoke to this board in November of 2017, I was an ignorant optimist. I believed that armed with knowledge, evidence, and science, everyone in the school system would rally to maximize every child's potential. I have now accepted that knowledge is not the problem, it's action and accountability. No one is actually held accountable for the educational progress of our children, especially those with learning disabilities. SSD's budget of approximately $500 million is consistently used to add administrative layers instead of increasing the number of teachers and improving training and program quality. An SSD internal study indicated over half of all children with reading disabilities getting SSD interventions regress over a school year. Their average growth is negligible. They are pulling our children from general education classrooms to offer ineffective interventions which leave them further behind their peers. No one in this room takes accountability for these concerns despite repeated pleas raised for years, including in the 2019 letter to the board signed by hundreds of residents. As our concerns fall on deaf ears, parents are filing due-process cases in record numbers laying bare the many ways their children's educational rights are violated. Rather than address the core problems, SSD has paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars in settlements to reimburse parents for costs incurred in tutoring, private schools, and other services. Lindbergh has spent over 100,000 of our taxpayer dollars in the last year for attorney's fees to fight against these children and their families. As a federal public defender, I observe daily the devastation caused by broken educational systems and low literacy rates. I have spent my career waiting downstream of the school-to-prison pipeline. Now I'm going to follow the advice of Desmond Tutu, who said, we need to stop pulling people out of the river and go upstream to see why they are falling in. No one in this board or in this administration will meaningfully advocate for our children against SSD to guarantee that they are receiving the educational services they are entitled to. I have spent hundreds of hours volunteering my time in IEP meetings to advocate for children in this district while maintaining a full-time job and raising five children. I can't do it all anymore, so I've chosen to focus upstream. I'm resigning as a federal public defender to serve the children in this district, this county, and this state. The IDA law is designed to protect families and children with learning disabilities, but it has no meaningful enforcement mechanism outside of an attorney willing to take on the school districts. I am that attorney. Dragon Law Firm LLC will open its doors next month to hold all school districts accountable to our most vulnerable children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dragon. And we have already conducted our executive session, so there is no need, and we will move to 15.0 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1568?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy.
Second.
Second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Board Meeting 1568 is adjourned.